Hello and good evening. Welcome to the Wakefield School Committee Meeting of Tuesday, August 20th, 2024. We will start by our normal means with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And next would be the reading of our mission statement. The vision of the Wakefield Public Schools is to graduate students who are confident lifelong learners, who are respectful and caring members of their community. Our mission is to prepare students for college, career, and community by providing rich and challenging curriculum, high-quality instruction, educational experiences that meet their individual needs and interests. Next would be our time for public comment. And I don't see anyone in the studio. WCAT, is there anyone on Zoom from the public that is not participating?
Just the ones that you can see.
Great, okay. Well, seeing no one for public comment, we'll move on to our consent agenda, which I believe we have a motion.
Yep, move that the school committee approve the minutes of the August 6, 2024 School Committee Meeting as presented.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, those in favor? All right.
I wasn't at the meeting, so.
Abstaining, thank you, okay. So I think that's one, two, three, four, four, one abstention, and two are absent. Did you get that, Judy? Thanks so much, okay. Moving on to superintendent's remarks.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ingles. With your permission, I'd like to take the items out of order.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you. I would like to welcome our principals that are here with us this evening. Thank you so much. And I'd like to start off with the handbooks. And so we've submitted both the handbooks and also a separate doc with changes to the handbooks. We've done this historically over the last three or four years on or about the same date. And so we're looking for any feedback or any questions that the committee may have. We're also looking to have a motion to approve the handbooks so that we can make the updates and get them posted onto our new website.
Great, is there a motion for handbooks?
I'm sure there is, I'm sure there is.
Does anyone have any questions about handbooks? Can we ask that?
So we were going to have, we had the principals here tonight to, basically, the handbooks were linked and they were going to just speak to the quick changes and then open up to any questions that you might have by level, if that's okay?
Yeah.
Yeah. So we can start with Tiffany and TJ, but I don't know if that's before or after the motion, I don't know.
No, we can have them discuss first.
Yeah, I thought, yeah, I thought the motion would just be to approve, but after they talked.
So TJ, Liberty, Principal of the Doyle Bear Elementary School, and Tiffany Back, Principal of the Greenwood are here to represent the combined preschool elementary handbook.
Good evening.
Thanks for coming.
Oh, happy to be here. So we are, Tiffany and I are representing, as Kara pointed out, the preschool, Shannon Blacker, Principal and Director of the Doyle Early Childhood Center, and Brian Schmidt and Matt Cotter on behalf of Walton and Woodville Schools. The, I'll talk a little bit, and then Tiffany, I know you can talk about some of the changes as well. We made updates as we do, you know, logistically every year procedurally with updates on names and numbers. We also, with the ratification of the Unit A teacher's contract, we updated the times, dismissal times for the elementary schools to reflect the language in the contract. We also updated some language around communication devices in school. Tiffany, I'm gonna hand that over to you to talk a little bit about.
Yeah, I say update, I think really added some language about that. I think at each of the individual schools, we had had different, I mean, not different, but the same policies in place regarding cell phones. And at the elementary level, cell phones hadn't really been an issue. For the most part, students were really good about keeping them off and in their backpacks and not out during the day. But over last year in particular, we started to notice more and more with smartwatches, and that seemed to be very much a gray area. You know, there are the smartwatches that have, you know, the step counters and they don't really text or internet. And then there are the other ones that get everything and/or have little games on them. And we were finding them become more and more of a distraction. And rather than having classroom teachers try to make individual decisions about them, we talked as an elementary group about the best way to address that. And just given what's been going on at the middle school with all of these conversations, we thought it was a good way to get started at elementary school to say that, you know, off, in backpacks, if families need to reach us, they can always reach us during the day. They, we can get in touch with their child. But we really want to make sure that we're focusing on the business of learning while we're at school.
And this is something we have talked with families about in years past at our back-to-school nights and different parent forms that we've had, we wanted to codify it and, you know, memorialize if lack of better phrase in the handbook.
We want to take these level by level?
Yep. Is that, does that work for you?
Yeah, it does.
They're prepared for that, yeah?
Melissa?
I just had a quick question. I was looking at the technology policy and it looked like it included headphones and earbuds as part of the technology policy and that they're supposed to be away during the school day unless they're provided by Wakefield Public Schools. I wasn't sure, I know at the middle school and the high school, kids bring in their own earbuds and headphones regularly. I wasn't sure if you guys are providing those to the kids.
So we, students are allowed to bring in headphones and earbuds. What we tried to be reflective on in the language is to make sure that students are using it for educational use only.
Okay.
So teacher-directed, not dissimilar to the other levels. So for example, you know, students are engaging in, you know, academic programming like ST Math or Lexi or other programming, you know, what they're doing in iReady diagnostic. And sometimes they'll need that for audio, sometimes they might have it in as a sensory or comfort level. So really, we try to be reflective and thoughtful with language around making sure that students are using technology or devices for academic and screw use only. So like Tiffany was saying, we want to make sure that it's consistent language, that teachers don't feel like they have to create, you know, kind of rules that might create, you know, conflict or questions, so just making blanket statements. But everything we have is to make sure that's an environment suitable for learning.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? No? Thank you.
Meg, you want to jump in for the middle school?
Sure, sure, hi, everybody. Our handbook remains largely consistent with last year's handbook. We did add additional language around tardies. And that section, it's not, it's not a new set of practices. It just articulates it a bit more clearly and much more aligned with the high school. We had a lot of conversations towards the end of the year with teachers who felt we had done a lot of strong work around attendance, day-to-day attendance. And then the next piece really is making sure that students are coming on time and being present for all of their instructional time. We thought the high school had a really good set of strategies and language in this area. So we met with, with the team at the high school and really borrowed a lot of what they do and made it a much more middle school friendly set of strategies. So you'll find that there was always a section with tardies, but we made it, we took it from one paragraph and kind of flushed it out into a much more clear articulation of what will happen if tardies really accumulate for kids each quarter. And I'm happy to answer any questions about that.
Any questions for anyone on the middle school handbook? Okay, none?
Okay.
Thank you, Meg.
Amy?
Thank you.
Amy for the high school?
Good evening, everyone. So for the high school, we have basically three changes that are pretty minor changes. First, the new schedule was added in with the five-minute addition because that sits in our handbook. The second is we tried to update some of the language around the attendance, tardiness, and dismissals. The policy hasn't changed in any way. We just tried to streamline the language to make it more simplified. Because of some changes that have taken place over the last however many years, it was a little redundant. So we just tried to streamline the language so that it was better understandable by students and families. That included taking out some language around COVID as well. So just cleaning up the language but not changing the policy in any way. And then the last thing was in addition, some language in our Group A behaviors around ASCs. We've noticed that there's been more wandering in ASC in the last year and students taking advantage of not checking in or out of ASC in the way that we've asked them to and being in places in the building where they're not supposed to be because they haven't checked in or out of ASC. So we just added that language so that it's really covered under our Group A behaviors. And in addition to that, it's just the other updated pieces that everybody else added at the other levels.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Bob?
Yeah. So Amy, the, so the discipline with the Group A behaviors, for the discipline around attendance and tardiness and dismissals, that's pretty much unchanged, right? That's pretty much the exact same as last year.
Again, it's not the exact same as last year. The consequence guidelines for tardies are the same, that hasn't changed at all. But yeah, no, any of the consequences, that doesn't fall under disciplinary behaviors, no. So it's the same.
Okay, thank you.
Well, thank you very much. I think that's it.
Yeah, I had, I had one question. There was a, in the high school handbook, it, it said that the library was open Monday through Thursday, 7:00 to 3:05 and 7:30 to 2:05 pending funding. I was just, I just wanted to make sure that, that you got the funding.
So there actually isn't a funded, there is not a funded position for that and it does not sit in the contract as a, an EC position. So the funding is dependent on my using some funds like professional development money or other things that we use every year. So, you know, that would be a welcome addition to the teacher contract if we could get something in. But right now, I, we play it by year, every year.
All right, thank you.
So that's a reference for after-school, correct, Amy?
Correct, yep, it's, yep.
Not during the day, Melissa.
Okay, so the.
Not during the day, there's a full-time librarian, but that, sorry, thank you, Doug, sorry for the clarifications for the confusion. That position is a Unit A position, so it is the contractual position that goes from 7:30 to 2:20 Monday through Thursday, and it, and they leave with the students on Friday at 2:10. So that additional time in the afternoon, we've been able to fund that through different ways every year.
Okay, all right, that, that helps my understanding. I would love to see that fixed in the, in the handbook.
In the contract, when we talk about stipends, is that what you?
No, 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 just to clarify, just to clarify in the handbook, yeah.
Oh, to clarify, yeah, yeah, okay.
Thank you. Now, do you want to make a motion?
Sure. I move that the school committee approve the updates to 2024, 2025 student and parent handbooks as presented.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, any discussion on handbooks? There being none. Those in favor? All right. Unanimous. Motion passes.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it, and I appreciate the questions and feedback. Next on, on my list, so Tiffany, TJ, and Meg, I think we're all set. I think next up is the internship program. And so we welcome David Robinson, our Director of Guidance, who is going to stay on with Amy McLeod for just a moment to talk about the WMHS Student Internship Pilot for 2024, 2025.
Great. Good evening, everybody, thank you for having us. Yeah, so I'm pretty excited about this. One of the things that, you know, we've noticed that we might be lacking a little bit would be a strong, you know, concrete internship program here at the high school. And talking to a lot of other schools in the Middlesex League, I'd say many, if not most, have some form of an internship program. So they're not all the same, but we have noticed that most schools have one in, in place. So we really want to get something started. So we want to stress the pilot part of the, the presentation here. Every school we've talked to, they said, start out slow, make sure you kind of go through that first year, work the kinks out, figure out what works, what doesn't. Don't have too, too many, it's not the whole class involved, thing like that. So we're probably gaining maybe about 25 or so students approximately to get started this year. And then we can look to see later on if we can grow, grow the program. It would be a senior internship program, so I think it said student program, but it would be for seniors, which is similar to most schools that are out there. And what would happen is, I guess the general description would be seniors would do the internship during the fourth quarter of the year. So they would take their classes like normal, first, second, third quarter, then the fourth quarter, which keep in mind, it's very short, because by the time the third quarter ends and then the seniors are done their classes, it's only about a six, maybe seven-week quarter period. So basically internship would be about a six-week internship, and the students would actually go to the internships instead of going to class. And so we would obviously recommend it being the same hours as the school hour, the same amount of school hours, definitely, but then the idea is to have it during the same type of hours of the day. If there needs to be some type of, you know, extenuating circumstance where they're later, that might happen, but the thought is definitely the same amount of hours they would be normally at school. And so what they would do is they'd report to the internship. And to find that internship, we would have them figure out what they're interested in. So it's any field that they may be interested in pursuing or learning more about. And then we could help them, the idea is to help them find the places. We'll have placements already to go and we'll, we'll continue to reach out for kind of like a database. So we try to like keep a bank as time goes on to kind of keep stores, people that would be interested in having interns. But at the same time, we want the students to be able to reach out to those employers because that's part of the learning experiences when you're trying to find a job or find a career, to research yourself and to actually be that first connection and reach out to the employers, to tell them what they're looking for and who they are. So that'll be kind of the, the beginning piece. And then each week, they'll be, it'll be set up so that each week they'll do brief journals on what they've learned, what they didn't know before, and if they still liked the field or anything they thought was interesting. We'll reach out to the employers weekly just to do the timesheet, but at the midway point of the internship, we'll have the employers fill out a brief kind of a midway performance evaluation, how they think the student is doing, and then any recommendations they have. And then at the end, one of the, I think one of the best parts of the program is to have a capstone fair. And so what hap, what would happen is those students and employers would come to the school. We have, it's kind of, I guess you could say like a job fair type of thing where each student would present what they've learned. And so they'd be there with the employer. I know in Lowell, we used to have a big, fairly big event, like a breakfast. So we'd serve food for both, you know, employers and students, and it was really nice. And then each student kind of got up with the PowerPoint or some version of, you know, engineers would have some kind of a model to show everybody else what they've learned. And I think that's something we could record to share, not just so everybody could see it, not just who's in attendance. But it's really kind of a nice way to see what happened over those six weeks. So there are definitely details to worry about. So as far as timing goes, we would let the students know about the program that it's going to exist this year. We'll let them know sometime in September, once things kind of get settled. And then we'll have kind of a timeline as far as identifying what workplace and what hosts they would want to have. We'll have an application, so we'll have them fill out application about, you know, why they're interested in that particular site, what site it is, what they think they'd be doing. There's forms that will have the employer to sign off and make sure that they agree to have the student. And it's, it's also a win for the employer because, you know, we, we want to show them what they're going to get, you know, so that they can start working with the, the children here and the, the young adults in the community. So it's usually a really good parenting place. We, we've done in Lowell a lot, and like I said, most of the Middlesex schools do have programs. So that's basically it in a nutshell.
Dave, if I could add just the Middlesex piece that you talked about. I think that in, in speaking to some of the other principals in the Middlesex League, this had come up in some of our meetings last spring when we, we meet as a, as a group monthly. And we were just talking about how important it is for the students not only to get that work experience as their senior, as their senior year, to get out and see what workplaces are like, but it also helps Wakefield get out into the community, right? So it really helps us put our students out there to kind of demonstrate where they are as seniors. So it really has a nice give and take to it in that we get our students out working more in the community in different areas and in different businesses and in different vocations. And, but yet our students are learning at the same time. And I do think it's something that we've been talking about. COVID set us back a little bit in terms of getting going with this, but we're, but we're really excited to get a pilot going with this this year.
I think a lot of times, that's great points. And when we have that showcase, I know some of the employers get up and talk. And we've had so many students who end up getting summer jobs, but also in full employment. There's a couple of students that are actually at like the engineering firm they're interned for. And the company said is, you know, we're going to have you work through the summers from college. And then they actually did become a full employee there after they graduated. So it's kind of exciting that, you know, even just the networking piece, the real-world skills of the contacts and having those people you can use, the references. There's a lot, there's a lot that comes out of this program. And as Amy mentioned, COVID kind of slowed it up. This is, for me, it was one of the top three things to, to work on when I got here. It feels good, at least hopefully we can get something started and then over time, we can grow.
So I know there are probably some questions, two specifics that we, we've talked about that there may be questions about. One, seniors will be graded on, so this will be, this will be a change. So for the 20 to 25 kids who are part of the pilot for the first year, their classes will end, as Dave said, sort of at the end of third quarter. So they have that six weeks of experience, so they would be graded up to that point. So they will have to be a grade criteria, right, passing all of their classes in order to be able to do this. And the only exception to that would be if students were in AP classes, they will continue to take their AP classes up until the test. So they would have to come into school part of the day for their AP courses. And then they could go out to the internship for the rest of the time. Again, that's done pretty consistently across the board at schools that we've looked at, so. But we'd be happy to take any questions. Dave specifically has, has worked out a lot of logistics so that we don't have to regale you with all of them, but I'm sure there are some questions that we can answer.
Thank you. Questions?
Kevin? Yeah, so in my mind, I was just thinking, like, the kids got dismissed at 12 and then they start the internship, but when they get to that point in the year, it would be like a whole day thing, right? So it'd be like, maybe they'd get to the internship at 8:30 or 9:00 or whatever time it would start. And then that would, that would substitute for the, the school day, okay?
Yep, and then part of the application, they'll put in what their expected schedule would be, like for each day, how many hours, and so we kind of get a sense of, that way if the employer sees and says, yeah, that makes sense. We want to make sure everybody on the same page. But yeah, so the, the intention would be to, to work during the school day.
Got it, thank you.
A couple of questions that I have, I think this is awesome. I think it's such a great idea and certainly, I think, going to be attractive to certain students. It, there's so many positives from this. I guess maybe a comment too. Just having done this mostly with college students though and graduate students, I think having an opportunity to kind of pull the students together and there be like an educational component, I think, is really valuable. Just even helping them in their own IQ, to kind of EQ, to kind of make sense of what they're experiencing and how to articulate that and, and those sorts of things, I think can be really valuable. So two questions that I have, one is around, because it's going to be school sanctioned, what's the process for vetting the sites where our students might be going to intern? As much as possible, can't guarantee safety, but what's that process to, this is an appropriate site with appropriate people who are going to be with our minor students?
So I think that we already have some sites where students have done internships in the past, so local businesses. There, there's definitely going to have to be a process where those sites are visited. I think that that is something that we've talked about Dave taking on, one of our guidance counselors also helping Dave with, so that we're visiting those sites, that we have a contact with a supervisor at that site. And then we need to look at sort of, this is something that we need to explore a little bit more of how the other schools do it, whether it's asking their supervisor to take a quarry themselves or our places in that place of employment. Most are already quarried anyway, so we have to look into that piece a bit, a little bit more. But definitely Dave has a, a list already of, of places that we've kind of made connections with, who are willing, who have worked with our students in different capacities. I know some of our students are going to want to do this in education. So, you know, I'm looking both at you, Mr. Scaldo, and you, Mr. Fontanella, you could take an intern. So I, some of those will be, so I already have you signed up, so we'll be visiting your work sites. But I think that many of the, the sites that we'll be visiting will probably have some of those pieces already taken care of. So we'll have to look into that a little bit more and make sure that we're doing it consistently. We're not the first to do this, so I'm sure there's a model to follow.
Yeah, yeah, no, definitely. Then the other question is just kind of a practical question. Can students be paid simultaneously of earning credit for this? Or does it have to be unpaid? Or what's kind of the, I assume most are going to be unpaid. But if there were an opportunity for students to simultaneously be paid for working, are there any rules around that?
Sure, if any rule, and the anticipation was be yes, would be unpaid. I don't know of any that I've spoken to where they get paid at the same time for the internships. But like I said, many of them have turned in, I mean, it's a quick six weeks, but many of those have turned, it leads right into a summer, so they may turn into employment. But as far as I know, I don't know of schools that have paid internships, but.
I also know there can be difficulties if, if students are paid while they're in an internship, they then fall under the responsibility and the evaluation and the, and the ability to be continually employed, right? So there would have to be an extra layer of evaluation, so that could put a student in a diff, because they're kids, they're going to make mistakes, that's the whole point, that's why they're doing this. And I don't know if there are any others, it's a great question, though.
Well, thank you, this is great. I think it's really exciting for students who can participate in this. So look forward to hearing how it goes over the course of time, so this is great, thank you.
You're welcome. And actually, to follow up one of your comments at the beginning, I didn't mention it, but when we do have those seniors gathered and picked to do a, I guess a workshop basically, where it's just kind of like life skills, soft skills preparation, because part of our selling point to the employer is, you know, point this out like in a brochure, like, hey, you're getting someone who has not just interest in this and they've done well in school, but they've gone through a workshop that has talked about all the little things, right? The etiquette, like if they, if they're sick, they gotta just, how to contact, email, you know, with lack, put the phones away, you know, eye contact, handshakes, you know, attire. So there's a lot of soft skills that go into this. And so there's kind of our already created presentation that those students will participate in to kind of get those, so when they go out, you know, they're somewhat prepared.
That's great, that's awesome, thank you.
Kevin covered most of my questions. I do have one comment just to echo what Kevin said. I think it's a great opportunity for kids to have this opportunity. We lost the lights in here. But I, I think that any younger student that has the opportunity to work in a real work environment really gives them an upper hand in eventually getting into the workforce and having that, that experience with them. I do have a logistical question, which is, will a college ever hold this against a student by not having their core classes in that fourth quarter senior year? Or will it not matter at all in that regard?
No, it, it won't matter only because the transcripts that we send to colleges have final grades. And so they already have, as long as they have final grades, it's not going to have like a blank of fourth quarter grades. So they still will have a final grade calculated. It's just so when it, it's not going to impact, it won't impact any kind of negatively with the colleges.
Perfect, yeah, and I know to your question, Kevin, it was one of the same questions I was asking. I know over the years, there've been changes in unpaid internships. I know at my company, for example, we're not even allowed to have unpaid interns anymore. So, you know, whether or not the school thing is a different situation, I don't know. But I do think that, you know, it's definitely something to worth following up on because I know the law has changed with regards to not paying interns over the years. And in some ways, it stinks because there's an opportunity for, for younger college kids to come in and learn something and you don't have to pay them or have them on the books. And we're not even allowed to do that anymore.
Yeah.
But thank you, I think this is great that, that our students will have this opportunity in this pilot.
Pete? Anybody else? Tom, no?
I do, I do want to say really quickly that I've already gotten an email while I'm giving this presentation that WCAT is signing up. Like, no, we're getting I-3, Dave. Like, no, we're getting, I have three, Dave, that's three on the list. I'm counting them.
Two down, 22 to go. All right. That was productive right there.
Amy, Dave, I had a question about sort of process prior. We talked about, um, them, um, using six weeks for this. Um, would there be, is there a ramp up to this during sort of, you know, Q3? During their third quarter, are they, I think of things like, um, like resume building. Like, you know, sort of one of those kind of life skills if they're going out for another thing, um, to work for a business. A resume is one of those sort of life skills that it'd be good to get your, your hands on early. Um, so I wasn't sure if they had supports for sort of how to apply for these, how to put themselves out there, how to highlight the skills that they have. Is that sort of baked into something that they might be doing prior to the fourth quarter?
Yeah. So the two things, that's a great question and point, um, two things. One, as the program kind of develops, there are, um, programs out there that have a few of those steps lead up to the, to that, like, just like you mentioned. But it also brings in the connection of just for our guidance department alone, we're implementing, um, a more structured guidance curriculum. And part of which we're already doing, uh, is to have two grade level meetings each year. And for the 10th grade, um, the spring of the 10th grade presentation is resume building. Um, so we use Naviance for a lot of these things for some, they basically range from career search, career survey, interest surveys, resume building, college search. Um, lots of different things that we do. And part of that is to focus on not just the career search. We're hoping that the results from that will maybe lead to the senior internships. But they also have the resume. Every student will have a resume started in Naviance just from that presentation. And so that's something we're going to be able to refer to, um, as, as a tool. So it kind of incorporates, it's just like one part of this whole career readiness, I think, for the school, for the plan.
That's great. Um, also in terms of, um, this sort of, uh, final grades and credits, will this count as a, as a credited class? Would this be like some form of independent study? Or like for the time that they're putting into it and we're having them journal it? And will they see something sort of at the end of it, aside from the experience? Will they sort of see something like reflected in their transcript?
Yeah, we'll, we'll have it on transcript. I don't, we haven't, I don't know if you want to jump in, but we haven't discussed exactly, you know, credit bearing or not. I know it's not, um, out there right now, but, um, it's something we definitely consider. And I haven't actually asked many schools whether they counted.
So I did. So, um, what, what some of them are doing is that it's on their transcripts, definitely, because you want it reflected for colleges, right? But they are getting the seat time credit for the classes that they're already in. So even though they're only completing three quarters of those classes, they're still getting the full year credit for their core academics. So it's sort of like an even trade. We could give kids a credit for it. It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be, uh, factored into their GPA, so it really wouldn't get them anywhere. Most of the kids by their senior year at Wakefield are way over credit. Um, so it's never going to be a situ, if a kid is academ, if a student, sorry, I stopped saying that. If a student is academically, um, ready to graduate being on track, they wouldn't need those credits. And the credits, credits wouldn't give them any extra bump in anything because it wouldn't, it, it would not be, um, weighted.
I get, so.
Does that make sense?
It does. Is what you're sort of saying is, uh, students that would line up for this opportunity would, uh, more often than not be well ahead in terms of credit count?
What I'm actually saying is most of our students are well ahead.
Okay, alright.
The vast majority of our kids are well ahead in terms of credits. Um, so yes, a student who would be not ahead in credits would be a, a student who's probably academically on the cusp and probably wouldn't be eligible for the internship because their grades probably aren't where we would need them to be for them to qualify for the internship. However, like we could give this a small credit bearing, um, piece, um, and it will be on their transcript.
Thank you. Kevin?
Um, yeah, I have a comment and a question. Um, so I would imagine, and this is just based on what I read, I'm not a college admissions officer. Um, and you probably, you know more than me as a guidance counselor. But I would assume that if you have this on your transcripts, this internship, I would assume that the, like, the credit doesn't matter. But having this internship on the transcript, I would assume would be a nice boost. Um, you know, for not just future careers, but also college. I mean, I, I, from what I've read, like work experience is becoming more and more highly valued as opposed to National Honor Society or captain of, of the swim team or whatever. It's, I think work experience, and maybe I'm completely wrong, but I, I am, I'm hearing that job and work experience in high school. Um, and getting that, like a soft skills that you guys were mentioning, I think is a big, is a big boost. So that's my comment. You can correct me if I'm wrong. Am I wrong?
No, you're spot on. I think that's kind of what I was referring to and Amy mentioned as well is to, to put it on a transcript, but to get wrapped up too much in the credit or five credit, that won't be really, um, advantageous much at all. But to have it on there is that the student did that is, I think is the key, what they want to come out on as far as documentation goes. You know, obviously the experience is the key, but, um, but you're right, having it on that schedule that colleges know they're going to do that would be.
Yeah. And my, my question is, if you had 60 kids apply for this and you have just whatever, 20, 25 spots, what's your selection criteria going to be? Assuming that, let's say all 60 of these kids are academically viable, let's assume.
Right, right. So we have, um, it's going, the application is a Google form. So one thing is that when we do open it up, it's kind of like, you could, it's fair game, you can fill it out and submit it. So we haven't nailed down exactly because I don't know how many we're going to, how many applications we're going to have. Because it's only seniors, they do have to realize that they wouldn't be coming to school for fourth course. I don't know how many to expect, but you're right. So say if there's 60, um, we'd have at least the order of who got their applications completed. Um, so that would be one criteria because as they come in, we could just read them over and make sure they're accepted. Um, we do have, I think we've talked about a little bit about having kind of a small committee just to kind of review everything and make sure that everything looks right. And, um, but as far as the selection of, oh, this one seems better than the other, we haven't discussed that detail yet.
Okay.
It's also going to be how many internship spots we can find, right? So if we could take more than 25, if we could manage 30, 35, and we had the spots and kids were finding places, I think we could stretch it a little bit. Um, but like Dave said at the beginning of this, everybody has kind of told us, you know, move slowly, make sure that all the pieces are in place before you take on 75 kids or something like that. So, I mean, I think I agree with Dave, we'd have to look at having a committee, look at, you know, a committee looking at the application, making sure kids are good fits. And if we have to, I think it's like course selection, it's kind of a lottery, right? We have to do that with courses sometimes, there's only so many spots. I think at the end of the day, if we had more viable candidates than spots in what our capacity is, we would have to do a lottery to be fair.
Okay, thank you.
Would also be a terrific problem to have.
I was just gonna, I was thinking that, yeah, that would be awesome. I mean, not for the kids who didn't get it, but it would be awesome and awesome if we had that, if we wanted to intern.
It would certainly challenge us to try to find more spots.
Yeah.
You know, I, I also think, you know, WCAT reached out while we're presenting this. Um, I also know that there are other town departments that have, um, gently reached out and said, you know, if you have students that are interested, we would like to participate as well. And so I feel like that has really remarkable potential from engineering to the construction project we're doing, to DPW, to fire and police. I mean, there's a lot of layers here where students could really get some nice experiences that could, um, lead to some nice career opportunities. And I think that, um, the companies welcoming students into these spaces are hopeful, as hopeful about this as we are. But leave it there.
Great. Any other questions? Thank you so much for doing the work on this. Um, I think it's going to be great. I can't wait to sort of hear back and, and hopefully maybe towards the end of the year, uh, get some students in and, uh, maybe get to hear some firsthand stories about how things went. That'd be great.
Yeah.
Alright.
Sounds good.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
So yes, I, I know, um, many of you have said this, but, you know, engaging students and developing, um, softer skills around managing their own time. Communicating with an employer, communicating schedules, communicating schedules not only with their employer, but also with their parents around, these are my commitments, this is my schedule, this is my week. Um, I think it has really just nice potential in terms of what we are hoping, uh, the skills that we want to develop for our students, right? And so more to follow on that. Um, the next item, item D on, on my list on superintendent, um, under the agenda is, is the newly edited bullying or the bully prevention and intervention plan that we refer to it as the BPIP. Um, it's really is not a policy, um, as much as it is a requirement from the Department of Ed for us to have this reference, um, that kind of guides, um, bullying and how, what we're doing around supporting students in bullying and doing professional development around bullying, um, and how we'll kind of run things in the district. So this is, this came into place, I want to say about 16 or 17 years ago, when, um, the Mass General Law changed a, around school requirements to be more engaged and do training, uh, with staff around bullying. Um, so we, um, we, this year received feedback from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed that our, our plan needed to be, um, updated, right? And so, um, Kara worked with, um, our council, our Special Education and Civil Rights Council. Um, and they made edits to this plan. We put into the packet kind of a red line version and a finished version. Um, and we're seeking, uh, your support, happy to answer any questions that you might have about this plan. Um, but we're seeking school committee support to make a motion to support this so that we can put the newly edited plan into or link this, um, to both our website um, and also to, um, handbooks, right? So this will be on the new website under the bullying, harassment and prevention section, right? Where, where parents can access this information. There's also, um, beneath the BPIP plan or the link, um, is an actual, um, form that parents can use to fill out um, in the event that their children have any difficulties in school. Um, and this form goes to both the central office and to the school where their child is. So. Yes.
Is, um, is there an opportunity for the form to be anonymous?
Um, is there an opportunity for the form to be anonymous?
Yes.
Okay.
There's a box.
Alright.
Okay.
And I have a quick question. Um, the red line version, it seemed to remove the timeframes.
Yep.
That we used to have in place. Is there, is there reasoning behind that or is?
That's the feedback we got from council, right? The timeframes are no longer applicable. Um, so the feedback we got from council was to, to remove those, so that's why they were removed.
Entertained to, to that, oh, sorry, no, you got it.
In the, in the timeframe thing, it did seem like there was an ad of a seven day appeals.
Correct.
Limitation, which wasn't there previously.
Previously, correct. That's also a change.
Okay.
Right.
On advice of council?
Yes. Yeah. And so just to back up around the anonymity piece. So I, I don't want parents that might be watching to think that, you know, um, things, reports can be made anonymous. They will be looked into, but often in the course of them being looked into or investigated, you know, it often comes up where, uh, if an incident occurred, that, um, that the anonymity can, is limited, right? If, when we're trying to solve problems amongst students, right? So. But a report can be made and to answer your question.
Kevin, did you? Yeah, I just lost my, yes. Um, I had a question, which I completely forgot. But the comment I had was, one thing I found interesting with the revisions, because I went through it and I was looking at the revisions. Um, it's page 27 in the packet, but it's a safe, it's the safety section that seemed to be wholly at, that seemed to be added. Which basically says that whenever there's any, um, basically allegations that a safety plan is going to be created before the investigation even starts. So basically, so this seems, so that I, this is new language, I assume. Not that safety plans haven't been put in place in the past. But is this something that, like the state or legal counsel basically said should be added, uh, to basically say?
Any changes that were made in the red lines were made by council.
Okay, right, so they were, okay.
Yes, yes.
So, no, I thought, I thought that was, um, you know, an interesting ad. Not, not interesting, I, I think it's good.
But, but safety plans, um, you know, in order for safety plans to be effective, um, you know, students need to comply and they need to be supported by, by parents, right? And so, um, so it's, it's not an, an act or a practice that we're, we take lightly. Um, we feel like if we're creating safety plans, we're in a pretty serious situation. Yeah.
I, I think I did read in that one section, Kevin, about, um, specifically to that was that the safety plan would come into effect if there was reason to believe that it needed to be there prior to sort of putting boots on the ground to figuring out the, um, the situation.
It does say in the document, you know, our, our goal is to keep parties safe while we're resolving any bullying or investigating any issue. So it's not like, so I, I think one of the things that we're trying to impress upon, uh, parents or any reader of this document that, you know, we don't get to the end of the investigation and then take action.
Right.
Right? That's not our practice. Our practice is to make sure that students are safe, that they feel safe and that they know, um, kind of how to respond in situations while we're looking into things.
Right. For example, if you like, um, took, um, you know, an, an accuser, any accuser, whatever, the bully, I'm sorry, the definition. But if you, but if you separated that from my class, sorry, yeah. But if you separated them, let's say from a class, let's say you moved, removed a kid from a class. That, a lot of parents might construe that to be, oh my gosh, this is the punishment. Like, like the investigation hasn't even happened yet, but that could just be part of the safety plan, right? Because if you're afraid that something's going to happen, that could violate, you know, that could threaten.
You're correct.
Anyone. You're, this is saying, we're going to, safety comes first, we're going to do whatever has, it's not a punishment. It's just, this is going to, we're going to put this in place to protect all parties concerned. And then the investigation's going to take place.
That's an accurate example.
Okay.
Correct.
Any other questions? I mean, prevention. Okay. Uh, do we have a motion?
Yeah. I move that the school committee approve the newly edited bullying prevention and intervention plan as presented. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Those in favor? Passes unanimously.
Thank you. Um, just to move, just to kind of go back up to the top to comments and updates. Um, I just want to update the committee and whoever may be watching. Uh, preseason is underway, preseason athletics is underway. Um, the band and color guard are away, uh, this week at camp, which is really exciting. Um, the box truck was here packing up and a lot of excited students were, were ready. Um, we've been talking about students going to camp for quite some time in the, for, for band and color guard. And, um, Mr. Bankard is really excited that this has finally taken shape and, and students are doing this. So we're, we're kind of looking forward to an update, uh, both from Mr. Bankard and students when they get back. Maybe we can get that on a future school committee agenda, right? That would be, I think, um, kind of enlightening, uh, to hear and exciting to hear. Um, we are very much feeling like, you know, we are days away from the start of the school year. So we are kind of in it, which is great. Um, it's great to see students around, it's great to have athletes here. Um, you know, we are, um, in the process of also interviewing for our athletic director position that's open. Um, and we, we interviewed today, we interviewed last week, we interviewed today, and we're interviewing tomorrow. I think our plan is to try to bring back some finalists next week. Um, and our hope is that we can, um, get, appoint someone next week. You know, we are kind of going at this as quickly as we can. Um, we've been really grateful, um, to the coaches and teachers that have participated in this, as well as the administrators that have jumped in to kind of help and support this process. Um, Kara Morrow and Amy McLeod have kind of taken the lead, um, in the first round of interviews. We're in our second round and next week we hope to have finalists, but there'll be more information forthcoming there, right? Um, so that's, that's happening. A quick report on, um, the WMHS construction project, just to keep everyone up to date. Um, the very quick piece is, is that I was talking with Steve Mayo. And, um, as, as Steve always likes to point out at the beginning of, of these updates is we are, um, on schedule and, and on budget, right? Which is kind of his, what he leads with, and I feel like it's, it's an appropriate way to start. Uh, but we also want to let the committee know and anyone who might be watching, um, that tomorrow, the, the remainder of this week and leading into the weekend, uh, bond construction and the construction crew and, and also kind of the, kind of DPW who are working at kind of, um, putting utilities over from the, the energy park over to the, to the site. Um, we'll be cleaning up hemlock this week because Northeast Vogue starts on Monday. So, um, that would, that will kind of open things up, which would be good. Um, I also want to kind of let people know again, we. Um, I also want to kind of let people know again, we we shared this in the last meeting. Um, we will let people know in in print. We've already sent this out once. I believe our SROs and the police will be sending something out and Jen McDonald will be sending something out as well. Um, safety measures that will be will be taken in regard to managing traffic. Um, there will be two what they call speed tables, which are speed bumps. Um, that um we're we're gonna put two uh on Farm Street and one on Hemlock. Which we anticipate will slow things down, which we think will kind of increase uh safety for our students. Um, and for our teachers as they're arriving in the morning. So we're we're particularly pleased about that. We also have uh worked with um the the project team. Um, and we're funding through the through the project. Um, we have a position posted for uh crossing supervisor or crossing guard. Um, on Farm Street as well, which we which we think um will help keep things safe. So the speed tables have been delivered, um and we're anticipating that they're going to be installed um as soon as possible. Um, and they will also be taken out in the winter for plowing because plows will will rip them up, but that's kind of where we are there. Um, other kind of points of note are just are then the our gym. Which had a drainage issue which flooded. Uh, a new floor has been installed. And so um the art people were there today uh working on kind of the perimeter paint. And kind of the Wakefield logo. Um, so that's good to hear. So um we're we're gonna be completing the what they call the striping. And it's it's really uh more complex and detailed than you could ever imagine because we have. A rectangular court for full court basketball. We have two smaller courts that are horizontal for basketball. And we also have two volleyball courts that are kind of within the smaller basketball courts. So there's there's quite a bit of work happening there, um but we we hope to have that online uh right at the start of school. And so wanted to update the the committee on that. Um. Just other news, um that the August thirteenth, fourteenth and today uh were retreat days for the administrators. So those are professional development opportunities for us and our admin teams and our principal teams where we get together. Um, we meet for from nine to twelve. Um, it's an abbreviated day. Um, but we kind of go over soup to nuts, opening school, what do we need to emphasize, what are we working on? We we talk about school improvement plans. We started to kind of broach subjects that we we want. Um, to to address with teachers as we open school. We also had the really the um opportunity to talk with um clinical director Donna Kosick. Who is a clinical director uh for the NAN project. And uh she has, she's worked with Elliot um and and does clinical supervision for our counselors. And has led professional development for our counselors, but she's also, she also did an hour of PD for our principals. Which we really thought was invaluable. We're also having her back and our principals will be taking. Uh, additional training in suicide prevention at the end of this month. Um, and today we had in um Dave Cartoonin, who is a communications consultant. Um, who is consulting with a small number of districts right now. Um, I think we're going to be one of the districts, but he specializes in. Um, really supporting school districts, schools and districts, district level administration and school administrators. Um, and their teams. So library media specialists. Uh, um, to kind of get to kind of work on different types of communication, social media, video. Uh, really, the medium that that he did, Dave specializes in is video. Um, which we think is going to be a nice add for us um to really enhance our communication. With the community. So we're, we'll have more to follow there. Um, and just one final note, um Kara has been working um overtime. And just sent out um the training modules to teachers. So. Um, when we open school, we have fourteen modules um that we want all faculty and staff to participate in. Um, before we start the school year, it takes about an hour. Um, but the topics um covered are, you know, Title Nine, um sexual harassment, bullying prevention, Section five oh four. IDEA restraint training, um bullying prevention, um food allergies, anaphylaxis. Um, you know, FERPA, uh suicide awareness. Um, and so. These are things that are really important topics and and we, most of our teachers have a knowledge of this. Um, but we feel like it's a refresher that we want people to take every year. Um, and the the new company that that we're working with is called Arcs Ed, uh which is new for us. We feel like um, so we used to, we had some of these modules in place that we would update every year. Um, and it was, it just took a lot of work. Um, and this is a company that does this, will prompt teachers, will support them to get this done. Um, and support faculty and staff to get this done and also keep our kind of a running record of who has done what where. So we're we're pleased at this new wrinkle. Um, I I've participated in the the professional development myself. Um, Kara has done it as well. I think we're kind of one and one in terms of uh first two people to go through the process. So, you know, we've tried to work out all of the kinks. Um, and that's getting, we're sending that out to our faculty and staff. We will give them time to do this in the first few days. If they do it ahead of time, most do it ahead of time, so that they can have some additional time to prep. Um, and just so that people know, we're also seeing a steady uh flow of of teachers. Um, coming into the to the schools when they can get in, if they're if they're not cleaning or if the custodial team is not cleaning. Uh, but people are getting in and they're setting up their classrooms and we're we're really starting to take shape, which is exciting. So um that is it for me. Am I missing anything, Kara?
Um, the only other thing I would highlight is that our early literacy academy started this week. Um, we we had to reduce it to one week this week instead of the two. Uh, but so far, great. It's it's just so funny. They get the, you know, the group, the groups across all the schools, the teachers have the routine down and just to walk around and see them all, even on day one. Um, looking pretty settled in. So um, you know, I want to thank. Our kindergarten teachers, our supporting staff, our professionals, the the parents have been great, um, communication has been happening. We were able to get communication out a little earlier this year because the grant was released earlier, which was nice for uh family planning for the summer. Um, so we have, we have a really strong turnout again. Um, every summer we've had really great numbers. Um, and I think all agree across the board. It's just just such a nice opportunity for our incoming kindergarteners to get in and get acclimated. It makes for a much smoother start. So that will continue this week, Monday through Friday. They come eight thirty to twelve thirty.
It is a heartwarming event.
Yes, it's really nice.
So that's that's it for me. Thank you so much.
Any questions?
Appreciate it.
Okay, I had a couple of questions.
Of course.
Have we heard from the Voke on when they're opening up their um their construction road?
Um, there's an injunction and so I haven't, there's been no, we we ask pretty regularly.
Yeah.
Because we are very hopeful uh about the ribbon cutting for that and. We want to support them to to get that opened as soon as possible to to lessen the traffic on Hemlock, but.
So answers the same.
No update, no.
No news is bad news. Um, Carrie, you mentioned um that the the early literacy was uh we did one week. Um, how can we drop down from two?
So our grant was, I don't want to say cut in half because that would be too, but it was, it was reduced uh pretty substantially. So in the past. I mean, this is, this whole thing initiated during COVID. And part of the criteria um was to have, you know, really smaller groups um. Uh, split the classes in half and then there were some safety um pieces of that in the early um summers as well. The requirements of the grant are still that we allow for small group opportunities to happen um throughout the day. So what we did this year was we reduced it to one week, but we still have um a lead teacher and a co-teacher to help get the numbers. Um, they want no more than a twelve to one ratio. Um, so we we have less than that across the board, but we have, we we heavily support it with um. A teacher, a co-teacher, and then a paraprofessional. Um, so we're still able to uh have plenty of um hands to create small group opportunities. Um, but it was less money to do it that way. So to run it over the course of two weeks, um. We would staff in a kind of similar way, not as much um that one, one week, but it would be more expensive. And then the teacher stipends would be two weeks in a row.
Right.
So there's a set amount of uh teacher stipend that comes with the grant as well. And so um teachers working one week versus two, it's just less money.
Do you know what the enrollment was from the two weeks versus the the one? I just, I remember one of the the pros of having it be across two weeks was being able to. Sort of try and um help families with their summer schedules.
Definitely. So I haven't done the the, because we're still, it's so funny, I I'll get an email like, today so and so showed up and I'm like, okay, one more. Um, so I'm gonna probably by the end of this week get a final count of participation and then I'll compare it to last year and I'll let you know. I do think that it's going to be close, only because we were able to communicate with families earlier this year. The grant came out in the winter this year. And we were able to get an early, hey, I think we're, and plus the word of mouth through Wakefield. It's now, this is our fourth summer, I think. So people kind of talk about it and we mentioned it at a kindergarten information, I like. Hey, if if you're, if you're coming in, try to hold this week if you can. So that's helped. So I think the numbers are going to be close even without the option of the two weeks, only because we had earlier communication. The first summer, I felt terrible. I mean, I think we were communicating to parents in like mid-June.
Right.
And we all know how we make our summer plans for our kids in like probably February, usually for the most part, so um. But even with that late notice, parents prioritized it, and we still have had high numbers.
I think our, I think our numbers, so going from two to one, it's not, it's not going to be half.
Right.
In fact, I think our numbers are pretty close to what we've had in the past because I think it's um. I think people are really trying hard to get in to to get their child into the program because I think they feel like it's really such a nice benefit.
I think, do we have um, do we have eyes on, like, let's say the grant didn't materialize some year, I I assume we would try and find a way to make this.
Yeah, I would love to keep talking that through and just thinking about, you know, each year and and again, I I was. Not happy the grant was cut, but I I know nothing lasts forever. And there was going to be a point where we'd have to talk about, can we afford this locally? And so I kind of was excited to see this week. Will it still work out with the 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 whole kindergarten class coming, you know, the same week, you know, with the staffing? Um, and it it seems to be going really well already, even though the the group numbers are a little bit bigger than they've been. But in the past, we almost ran into, sometimes the groups would be too small. I remember one of our teachers last year, for however it shook out, she had like three students in her class and she was like, it was like a little playdate. It didn't feel like kindergarten readiness, you know, it just was too small. So the ideal numbers are between, you know. Our our kindergarten numbers, we try not to have over twenty-two ideally, even though we do in some places have twenty-three.
Yeah, I would just say I, we've heard year over year how much um benefit we're seeing in this and especially from the kindergarten teachers, sort of after day one, like it's just been night and day. Before this and after this program. So if if we ever saw on the horizon that this grant would be going away, I would just urge us to try and find a way. Um, to fund that from local sources if possible, because I think the benefits are just obvious.
Definitely. And we'll keep trying to think about, you know, well, you know, not to scale it back so much that it's not effective, but what would be the most cost effective way to run it? For sure.
Anecdotally, from a student that's participating in this program, talked to you the last couple of days and he's having a great time. So. I think it's, yeah, it's, I agree with you. We. It's so valuable and if if it were to happen, how do we, how do we make sure that it can be sustained? Because it's a wonderful way for, I think, a new student to be introduced to the whole concept of kindergarten, et cetera. Yeah, they do a great job. It's so.
Great. Anyone else?
That's it for me. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Um, moving on to Chair's comments, um, I just had a couple of things. Um, one, in going through and Kara, this this might be for you um or or Diana Ho. In going through some of our policy book stuff and seeing where stuff, this was probably the first week where I was bouncing back and forth between old website, new website. Um, and so our information does not exactly sync across um those two places. Um, and so I don't know, do we have an anticipation on when we're going to sunset? The old one, and depending on how long that's going to be, um, is there, can we put maybe some thought into if we can put information in both places?
Yeah, that's a, that's a a good point. One of the, I know that Doug and I are planning on communication going out later this month and. Ideally, we were, we have to talk to Jeff and and Diana about, I know that they've been talking about when to. You know, timeline on sunsetting the old um website, but I just haven't, um, we haven't all sat in a room because our schedules have not um. Um, aligned in the last couple of weeks, but um we communicated via email just in terms of they're they're very close and ready. But we are, we are noticing a couple of little things, like even today, we you know, we were reviewing our religious accommodation policy and we noticed that. The new website had the old policy, not the new one, but um so we we just made a note of that. So we we still need to. Make sure it's a hundred percent ready to go. Um, but I don't have an exact answer on when we will sunset, but. I do have to connect with Jeff Weiner and Diana Ho because I know they've been talking about it.
Great. Okay.
Yeah, just along the same lines, we also met this week um with Bill Renaud to talk about accessibility. Um, and the new kind of um requirements that are coming out for digital accessibility with websites. So we're trying to look ahead and we'll be working with the town because any changes or accessibility um. Changes that we make to our websites plural, um, we're we're talking about doing it townwide. So that, you know, the same type of supports that you might access. On our website would be the same type of supports that you might access on the town website as well. So supports like language, vision, um, any issues like, you know, so, you know, uh voice directed, you know, so that there's. There's an increased um need for websites to be more accessible. Um, and and more kind of um able, you know, accessible in regard to whatever your need might be. And so um, so that's kind of what we're doing and that's a conversation that we're going to be having. Both with the town side and it might be a capital, um, a common capital request, but more information to follow there.
Jennifer McDonald has already reached out as well on this, along the same line. She and Diana have a schedule to meet in the next couple of weeks too.
Interesting. I always wonder how much of it is hosted, how much of it is just based on the browser that you use? Because so many tools are embedded in that, whether it's uh language, uh talk to speech or speech to text. Interesting. Um, okay, more to follow, I guess.
Yes.
Okay.
Plenty of irons in the fire, yes.
Um. Class assignments, I think um in terms of the next time we're going to meet will be past the first day of the school year, I think we're getting, and I only hear from two different levels, but my understanding is. Uh, elementary assignments might come out uh as early as tomorrow. Um, is it the upper secondary is coming out maybe on Friday?
I ju- I talked to Andrew Tetchell today and he said the plan is for Friday for Galvin.
Okay.
Um, that's the plan as of today and then.
High school was last week. All right, because we had freshman orientation.
Oh, yeah. That's right. I was caught by the senior leaders, the photos like two weeks ago. I'm like, it can't be, it can't be that early.
Yeah.
Thing. We're running college here. Okay. Um, the last thing that I sort of had for the broader um committee was a question in regard to when um. Ms. Cummings, the WA president, was here and had talked about um sort of an email that she had sent to us and. And in that email, um, she had referenced, um, you know, the the benefit of having a teacher sort of sit at the table with us. Um, I didn't want to kind of mute that conversation. I thought it was one that we should have. Um, but I felt like there might be some preliminary work that maybe a subcommittee could do along the lines of. Does anyone else do this? Um, what are some sort of guidelines around that or if? That's what I want to know is not just for us to have a conversation, but for someone to collect some data for us to talk about. Um, I had gone back and forth on like, I'm curious about what subcommittee people might um feel an appetite if we. Have an appetite for a subcommittee to take up that work and and dig in a little bit. Um, so I'd like to sort of solicit some feedback on what what folks think. Um, and and quick, quick discussion, but uh if you, we'd be open for that. Yeah. Did you have something?
Sure. Um, sorry, Pete, I got your policy, but um. So I mean, it seems to make sense that for the existing subcommittees, it would either be labor or policy. Policy, sorry, Pete, because I'm not on policy anymore, but um. Love delegating work to other people, but uh it it just be, just because we did change. The policy to have a student representative, it's the same kind of theme, having different constituencies within town. Um, you know, be able to offer input and insight uh through the broader school committee. So poli- policy would seem to me to make sense for that work to happen. But I know that you've got a lot of stuff going on already, so I think it's kind of a combination of where it should go, but also how much work the subcommittees currently have. Uh, to take this on. So uh.
And I do think, I mean, to your points, I think a starting point would be to talk to MASC and and I I think they could probably give us some input.
I've looked and I don't, not to cut you off, I've looked, I don't see a policy on this.
No, less a policy. Um, I I thought you were asking about, is this a practice in place? I don't know if this is a practice in place by every school committee except for us, no school committee, and that would be the type of feedback. And that would be the type of feedback that maybe MASC could help share is that, is this something that's common among school committees? Or do they have school committees who are currently doing this type of practice and how does it work? Like that type? I mean, otherwise we're just emailing three, you know, I don't know how many in the Commonwealth, three hundred school committees and asking them if they do this, right?
In, in a short, or, or maybe asking, you know, people in our district, in our area, you know, we don't have to go to every, you know, every state and every town in the Commonwealth.
I mean, I don't mind adding it to policy communication, you know, given how we have to work, it would probably be something that a single member of the committee would work on versus trying to do it as a, you know, if we do it as a joint thing in a committee, we could easily just spend hours in, in meetings. But I do think we could ask if a committee member would be willing to take on that work and then come back to maybe to the full committee and report back on what we're seeing in other, in other districts. And I, I think to your point, we could look at the Middlesex District, we could ask MASC for their, you know, input on it, just to have some data point.
I like sort of that, that idea of sort of, of having someone collect. My initial thought, I, I had started thinking policy and then I went back and thought maybe labor. Kind of because that's where that relationship exists now. And so I wasn't sure if labor might be an appropriate place for it.
I just wanted to point out that the, the policy that we have is actually just reflective of mass state law. All school committees are supposed to have students on their, their school committees. So our policy is really just a reflection of that. So we don't even really have a lot of experience writing that kind of policy. We just kind of adapted or adopted what we were legally required to do.
Tom is Chair of Labor.
Except I'm not, but okay.
Oh, you are.
But I think we were going to say something.
I have a comment.
Yeah.
Yes.
I, I think it, I think I, and I understand Stephen that you think it could live in, in, in both places. But I, I would suggest or consider that it really begins as a, as a policy matter. I'm not quite sure that, that it's, that, that we're going to land here because of, of labor relations. We're going to land here because it's either a good idea that is supported by other school districts or, or we're pioneering it. So I would support it being, coming out of, of the policy shop first.
Yeah, I think that that makes sense. I like that idea.
Just going to toss out, there could be a different subcommittee with one member from labor and one member from policy. And two people are working on it instead of just one person. Structurally, it's not great, but.
I don't know how that would work as a subcommittee with things like quorum and open meeting law and it could get messy.
Could it be a working group?
It sounds, that sounds better.
I don't know. I mean, I'm hearing that there's value in understanding what other districts are doing and having data. Because what we don't know today is this a common practice that's working well in tons of other school committees? Or is this a practice where, as Tom said, we would be pioneering it? And maybe pioneering things aren't necessarily bad, but it's good to know going into this just how other districts are handling it. So I, I mean, I think we could add it to policy, but I think it really is going to, just for efficiency purposes, it's going to be one member of policy who comes back and, and brings some data back to, to the full committee where we could then have a discussion. And at least then we could be, you know, have data to help decide where we go next with this. The administration can support this as well, right? So whoever may be taking this up, right, the administration can support this work as well, right? And understanding what data points are you looking to, to get? Now, what questions are we looking to get answered? And how might we get those answers, right? And so Labor Council is a, is a resource for us. MASC, Alicia, who, who did PD for the committee is, is a resource for us. So e- even though policy is taking it up, but if we're reaching out to, to MASC just to ask, you know, the questions that we have, these are the questions, our council, these are the questions, so.
I, I also think we should be kind of open-minded and creative about this. I think that if we just go into this saying, like, asking the narrow question, like, is Ms. Cummings, you know, you know, ask, like, you know, being seen by those school committees, I think that if we look at, you know, the purpose of the ask, the idea of, let's say, you know, teacher input or, or teacher, you know, feedback with anything we're talking about, I think that you would possibly find numerous different avenues that's happening in different towns. That's not necessarily answered by the specific question, is like, is this particular thing happening, yes or no? Like in the three hundred whatever districts in Massachusetts. So I, so I think whatever working group or whatever subcommittee is working on this or, or looking at these questions, I think, I, I just think we should go into it with kind of, I don't know if open mind is the right way of thinking about it, but kind of a creative idea to, to meet the.
I think that that goes back to what Tom was saying around, you know, are we pioneering this, right? And I think one of the things that we may need to do is to engage Jess Cummings again to just hear more about, you know, the goal of this, right? And how, how might we do this, right? And so, because there are limitations when it's just presented as the union president wants to sit at the table. Or is it more teacher participation? Those are, those are different things, right? And so, you know, and, and so just trying to understand that, understand the, the pros, but also the cons or the limitations of that, right?
So I'm thinking as a, we should have a discussion like this. Not now, I'd like to see it on the agenda, but I'd like it with some information. And if policy is okay taking it up and doing some of that research, I think it'd be questions around, is this happening in other places? If it is, what's going well, what's not going well? And then I would feel better about sort of having an informed discussion around it.
The, the only follow-up question I'll ask is, I do think getting some additional live questions with Jess would be helpful. Would, would you recommend we do that when the, the subcommittee can come back to the full committee with some answers to these questions? Or there may be some value in just adding that as a agenda topic where we could learn more about kind of, because I think understanding how maybe she envisions it would work, like that may help us, like even if it's pioneering it, it may be that, you know, we all say, wow, this sounds really like an excellent idea. And it doesn't even matter that maybe the data of other districts doesn't support. So I just want to, there's value in just hearing that as an agenda topic regardless and giving her the opportunity to present that live to the, to the committee. I mean, it's your call, but I, I think there's some value there.
For me, one of the things that I'd be interested in hearing is, is there an appetite from other positions in the district? Is it just, you know, teachers or is it paras? Is it other staff members, like from, people from athletics? People from guidance, people from, like, are they? Like each, should each unit be represented? Like, how are we thinking about this? How big is this?
I know. The table is only so big.
There's new high school.
There is, oh, this is true.
So the, the other part of this is that hopefully the committee, us as a, a group, thinking about what might be beneficial for the, us as well, right? Not just in terms of what the external ask might be, you know? What might be helpful for us, right? Is it, it would be great to have a, a, a meeting, a, a set agenda item where we're hearing from all of the units, right? And, and maybe that's not from the table. Maybe it's an invite, you know, based on the calendar annually. Where we're hearing from Unit C, Unit, you know, WAA, where we're just hearing different perspectives about, you know, what's happening, what, what their work is, what their, their kind of hopes and goals are. You know, so I, I think going back to the, these ideas around, you know, not, you know, being a gatekeeper and saying yes or no, but thinking more creatively about, you know, even if, if we end in a space where we have someone at the table, okay. But if we, if we don't, who haven't we heard from that we might like to hear from, right? And are there other ways to kind of start this relationship and conversation? That's just one perspective, I think, you know, because I, I think that that's something that has come up in the course of this conversation over and over, right? Like, it would be great to hear from Unit C. It would be great to hear from, you know, the clerical unit, who we never hear from. It'd be great to hear from the traffic supervisors, right? So anyway.
I think we can pencil this as maybe a future agenda topic so we can get lined up and other people that may want to weigh in can have a chance to do so. But just are we okay with subcommittees starting to take a look at just, like I said, just if anyone else is doing this, if they're doing it well?
I sent Judy a, a draft agenda, so I'll just have to make sure this gets added to the, to the draft agenda for our next meeting.
Oh, sorry, did you want it to be? I, I, I guess my, my thought was whenever, when we had the student being brought to the table, the whole idea was having a student's perspective on whatever topic that was on the agenda. And I just, you know, I was just looking at the motions that we made today, just looking at the topics. So we look at, you know, bullying, prevention, intervention. Would a para-professional who was just, was here, let's say was sitting at the table, like a representative from, from that unit? You know, I kind of wonder if the para would have something to say about the plan, you know, for, for the student parent handbook. What, what would a teacher say about, you know, the student parent handbook? So I, I think, I think the whole idea, the whole goal, at least in my mind, and might not be anyone else's goal, but kind of the goal, I remember when we had the student added was just to have that perspective. Like whether or not they're going to say anything, but that they would have a chance to respond to whatever was that was on the agenda. Obviously non-voting members, but you know, it, it is, it's, it's nice to not be siloed sometimes, like that could be the danger.
But there was a specific request made and I feel like we need to address that, right? I don't want that to get lost, right?
That was all I had for comments. Sorry if that went longer. I probably pushed this over for minutes. Number eight, budget items, none, I see. Okay. Number nine, subcommittee reports, finance and facilities. This is the one that you are Chair, Mr. Mark, sorry.
So we have not met during the summer, but we need to put a meeting on the books for the next couple of weeks, so.
Thank you.
We shall.
Okay. Mr. Piscala?
Yeah, Labor and Personnel hasn't met since our last meeting, but we do have our next meeting scheduled. It is going to be next Monday, the twenty-sixth at five PM in the superintendent's office.
Thank you. From Student Services, Melissa, we haven't met. Eileen.
No, there's a meeting on Thursday.
There's a meeting on Thursday and I met with the Chair to, to work on the agenda and also kind of a survey that Eileen had started. So I feel like we're, we have some kind of irons in the fire. So I think things for that subcommittee are progressing nicely.
Great. Okay, looking forward to Thursday. Pete, Policy and Comms.
So we have not met. Our next meeting looks like it's going to be September the sixteenth, if I remember the date right, at four o'clock. You know, one of the things that I have on that agenda is to talk about, you know, maybe a different way or discuss different ways we could look at reviewing the sections of the handbook that are coming back from the whole MASC review process. So just kind of recap for the full committee. We're trying to have an outside review by MASC to look at all of our policies and look at their model policies and recommend how we kind of combine those two together with the eventual goal of migrating our policy site from being these individual PDF docs that live on both the old and the new WPS site to be a site hosted at MASC that kind of follows all of the standard policies that every district should have and also has a much better way of searching for information in them and also maintaining it going forward. I'll say that it has been a struggle over the summer to find good times for all of us to meet. And that's why our next meeting isn't for approximately a month from now. And that is a challenge that I think we'll discuss in our next subcommittee meeting as we look at how we go about continuing to make progress on these, these various reviews that are coming back. Because we could easily spend six hours a time just looking at, at, you know, chapters that come back and we, we just don't have enough time where we could find together to do that. So we do have a Book D that came back from MASC. It had one time where it was reviewed in the committee, had some additional feedback that was received that Dr. Lyons, you know, made an attempt to review and put in as much of it as possible. I would not say it's a hundred percent perfect. There may be some additional, even including subcommittee member input. I'd like to make the motion tonight to put it on the table for two weeks so the whole committee can look at it, still get input from additional members of the subcommittee if there's other things I'd like to see. The alternative would be this just kind of sits around for yet another month. And I just don't, you know, I, you know, I prefer to give an opportunity to just take that feedback in over the next two weeks with the document on the table. So that would be my preference as to how to proceed with Book D.
Do you have a motion?
Go ahead, Kevin. I move that the school committee lay on the table for two weeks, consideration and vote at the next school committee meeting on Tuesday, September tenth, two thousand twenty-four. WPS policy, section D as presented.
Second.
Motion's being seconded. Any discussion? Mr. Mark?
In looking at this, one thought that I had and perhaps would share with maybe, if the committee concurs, it may require an amendment to the motion. I would volunteer as, as, you know, given the nature of section D being the fiscal management, I would volunteer to put this on an upcoming agenda for the, for the, for the finance subcommittee to have us, you know, sort of walk and become, provide some comment as, as, as a subcommittee group. I think that may, that may be valuable for this finance subcommittee to meet with the superintendent and the school business manager to sort of walk and talk through that. And if that's something acceptable to the committee or they think it's, you guys think it's a good idea, I would ask that we amend the motion not to have it be done in two weeks because I'm not sure that we could possibly put all the, all the pieces together in two weeks.
I don't have any issue with that. I mean, we did get feedback from Christine as part of reviewing it. But if you think there's additional input we can get, I don't, you know, the whole goal is to get additional input and from everyone. So, you know, my, I think my main concern is just the process going forward to get through these, that if, if it takes forever to get through each of these books, we'll never get to transitioning to the MASC website. Like I remember when I joined a, a full, full term ago, the goal was to get this transition to happen and we've only gotten through, I think, one book since my time here. So I think that has a lot of value. I think my only question is, just in terms of like getting through this, if, 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 you know, whether or not we're, we're going to spend forever reviewing these books. But if you do think that the subcommittee can add additional input, then I'm fine saying we'll just, you know, drop the motion and talk about it again after the, you know, after. But I, I do think, is there some value of having on the table to even get that?
Well, I think it should be on the table. I was, I was.
So put it on the table, but no, I put the two weeks there.
Right.
Okay.
You're saying, you know, maybe four weeks by our, not our next meeting, but the meeting after.
Something that becomes more practical than having to, in order to get this moving, we'd have to meet actually next week, get it on the agenda for the following week.
I like that. I mean, so I, I'll make a motion to amend the motion on the table and I don't have the next. Judy, do you know off the top of your head, is the next school committee meeting two weeks after that or?
I think it's September twenty-fourth.
Okay. So to modify, to make an amendment to modify the motion on the table to have this for four weeks consideration and vote at the second school committee meeting on September the twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four?
Second.
Motion's being seconded. Any further discussion? Those in favor? Unanimous. Motion passes. Thank you. And yes, I know how that can be a slog, Pete. So thank you.
I forgot. This is your prior job.
Yeah, yeah. Yes, thank you. Any liaison reports?
Yes, we had the Sustainable Committee met at August eighth. And yeah, I've got some stuff to report out. Sports equipment swap was a huge success. That's something they're going to hope to do and hopefully in different seasons, but that was, that was a huge success. The Woodville is getting senior citizens to help out with composting and waste at the cafeteria. That seems great. I'm very excited about that. I, I, I have, I have two jobs. One job is to ask about our trays, if they're, to make sure that they are not compostable.
You mean that they're not styrofoam?
I have no idea. So they, they asked if they could be composted and I don't know if, what can be composted and what can't. I'm sure you do, but I don't, I don't. So I was supposed to talk to, maybe bring Tim in or Doug.
Dustin.
Or Dustin. Somebody. But yeah.
We can follow up at the next meeting on that. Great.
There was, from the ESC's perspective, there was a time when, especially during the pandemic, we were supposed to transition to non-styrofoam, supply chain became an issue.
issue and funding. And then so I think that's been sorted, and I don't think we use styrofoam in the district any longer.
Okay.
Where we can, we use compostable trays, and where those aren't used, they're plastic.
Okay, great.
As in, like, we wash them?
Gotcha.
Okay.
Yeah, yes.
Also, one, and I did message this out to the PTOs today, but basically, one thing that they asked was if the district could ask parents to consider whether cars are waiting to pick up their children from schools, that they turn off their cars, because there's a lot of, a lot of cars that are on for 20, 25, 30 minutes, waiting for the bell to ring. And so the ask was for us to, you know, request, put some messaging out, to ask parents to not be idling while waiting. So I emailed the PTOs today about that, and maybe the district can communicate that out?
Yes, no question.
Could you forward us, Kevin, what you sent to the PTO so we have the same language for the principals?
Oh, sure, yeah. Hopefully, my message is good, but yeah, absolutely. Feel free to make my message better.
Do we not, Mr. Chair, have a no idling policy?
We don't have a no idling policy. We have no idling signs, but only at the Galvin School, oddly enough.
I don't have a no idling policy.
But this is something that was taken up with Town Council last spring.
Yeah.
And this became a point of conversation. This went to Tim and Facilities, and I think that messaging went out in the spring around idling from the principals, but we could certainly do this again. And signage was a point of conversation as well at Town Council, because there is a special process to have signs approved and, and posted, right? Was, was my, as I remember it.
Yeah, and I think the feedback on that was around the lake, like they had added some signs, and I think some people kind of felt it was like sign pollution, so I think that's why they were having that discussion.
Sign pollution. I'm so happy you cracked yourself up.
Last, last point was about the amount of bus spots that, that are available for all the Wakefield students. And one question, and we talked about this for a little bit, was what happens for students that are signed up for the bus, they start taking the bus, that all of a sudden they're in after-school activities at the Galvin, they're not taking the bus, let's say, three days a week? If there's a way to open that spot up for other kids on the way home? I, I, I said, that sounds like a logistical nightmare, but I just wanted to bring that up to the committee, because I, I know that that, that would be, I, I see the point in that there, I could see kids starting to take the bus and then not if all of a sudden they're staying after school.
Yeah.
Three, four, or five days a week, and that there would be open seats, that, that'd be hard.
So parents are also paying for the spot, right? So if a child.
Yeah.
It's like a child being sick for a day.
Yeah.
Right, to say that, you know, I can take one more because I have an open seat, you know, how, you know, who's responsible for that? It's like, it's like overselling.
Yeah.
Seats, right? And so it doesn't seem like it's the way we, we might want to go, because I think it's going to leave someone standing on the corner, right? And so I don't know if that's exactly what we want. We did share data back and forth, and it looks like.
Yeah, yeah.
Our, the majority of our buses are full.
Which is great.
With the exception of Dolbear. And so I think, you know, we were encouraging, and, and Dieter sent out a note that was specific to the, to the schools that were just under full, encouraging people and letting them know they're just, this is how many seats we have left. So I, I appreciate the conversation and the feedback, both to myself and to, to Dieter. It's helped us really kind of communicate well around where we do have space and where we don't, right?
Just to go back, I will apologize to Mr. Markham, because we do have a policy on vehicle idling.
502R?
502R, but that's not going to stop anybody from idling, because I think it says, except for the following reasons, traffic conditions queuing at a school for the purpose of picking up or discharging students. So, yes, while we do have a policy.
Doesn't apply.
It will not apply to what you're asking.
Gotcha.
So, yeah, okay. Yeah, I stand corrected, the last time it was looked at was in 2013, so, not that I'm saying, Pete, you know, throw something else on your plate, but. I'm not rewriting that one. Any other liaison reports? And you were done with ESC?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, that was good, doing a lot of work over there. Future dates and agenda items, next school committee meeting will be Tuesday, September 10th, which again will be after the first day of school. We have a list of future agenda items, is there something on there that someone is not seeing that they would like to see?
Is AI on there?
Yes.
Good.
Is all of that for September 10th?
Negative, it is to be placed on there sometime in the future.
foreseeable future.
Even some of that stuff, I think I have mentioned, could probably be taken off of the future agenda items if it's an active thing that's being like worked on by a subcommittee. I don't think it needs to be a future agenda item, I just expect that subcommittee is going to bring it before the larger committee in its time, so we might be able to whittle that list down just a little bit. School committee comments? Everyone's trying to get out early, okay, so it's good. I will just say, next week is, or the week after is the first day of school, so good luck to everybody coming back, I hope everyone has an easy transition. My kids are 50/50 on, on wanting to come back, so we'll see how that goes. And yeah, and hope all the, the educators enjoy a soft landing back and any new educators that we have coming.
Yeah, we have our mentor program starts next week, so all of our new, our new, newly hired teachers and their mentors will be in next week, starting on the.
Ballpark, how many new staff members do you figure we have?
I think we have, if I had to guess off the top of my head, I would say about 15, but I have it here.
That's a good number.
We will also be sending an invitation to the committee members to attend if you're able to on opening day, which for us will be 9/4, right? 9/3 is a professional development day and also a primary, right?
Yeah, great. Pete?
Can we, for future agenda items, welcome some of our new teachers to.
Who've done this in the past.
Yeah, that's always been enjoyable. I know we don't get everyone, but it's always nice to, to meet our new staff.
Happy to do it.
While we're fishing for invitations, if, if Mr. Banker wanted to invite us back up to Landrygan, you know, for a preview, I would not say no.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll let him know.
So we have about 21, as of today, 21 hires, and we're still in process of killing the rules.
Still have a couple to hire.
All right. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Yep.
Move that the school committee adjourns its meeting of Tuesday, August 20th, 2024?
Second.
Motion's being seconded, those in favor? Unanimous, and it passes. All right, thank you, everyone, have a good evening.
Thank you.